Father, you are really good and we praise you in advance for a great meeting for giving us wisdom and insight. Thank you for the city that we live in, the citizens that we have. We speak blessing and peace and health and prosperity over this community. Come and do whatever you want to do. We welcome you and invite you, Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Now call our meeting of March the 3rd, 2020 to order. And our next item on the agenda is reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next we have community recognition. Thank you very much. And I would like to ask Heather Olson-Beal with SFA to please join me up here. Today, we have members of the Community responsiveness and engaged advocacy and teacher education known as the CREATE program. I'm going to let her talk about a little bit and explain that program and then introduce some of the participants in it today.
Thank you. And this is my colleague, Dr. Lauren Burrow. This program, I think, is a really good example of partnership between SFA, the city, and Nacogdoches ISD. We've done a lot of work with the Nacogdoches Public Library. And this particular aspect of the program, we're really trying to get our pre-service teachers to be connected to the communities that they teach in, in this case, Nacogdoches. We want them to stay here, which sometimes they choose not to, but we're trying. And this particular aspect of the program, we have volunteer families who have agreed to be mentor families for our students. So, a family that has students at Nacogdoches ISD is paired with two and sometimes three of our students. These families invite our students into their homes, into their activities, sometimes to church, sometimes to quinceañeras, all kinds of things like that, for them to kind of have a look at what their, the kids' lives are like outside of school. Because sometimes they get, teachers have this tunnel vision and everything is about what happens between eight and three and there's not a whole lot of attention paid to what happens outside. So, they're really getting a different look at the community. We asked them to meet with our students twice a month. And the ones that are here have done it for one or two years. And so, they've mentored a number of our students and we're really grateful for them. So, we thought we'd let other people know that we're grateful for them. So, today we have Linda Autry here and Bridget. Are they coming up here?
Yes.
We want them to.
Yes, we want to recognize.
We have one more. That's Nyeli Mejia. Come on, sister.
Come on down.
Well, that's, that looks like. That was. You can come up. Come on, Mejias. This is Nyeli Mejia and Mr. Mejia. I don't know your kids' names. Help me. Victor Mejia and Chelsea, Bridget Autry, right? Amber Teal and Xavier and Ayana. Come on, y'all. You know you're excited. And Crystal Deckard. I don't know your kids' names. Remind me.
Delia and DeJaden.
Delia and DeJaden? Okay, and Courtney Roberts and Pamela Lampkin. So, y'all come down.
That is awesome.
It is really awesome.
And let's get the council down here. We will take a picture. And I would like to, for you to have this, for you to take it back to your office or however you all share this. It is representative of our brick streets.
Okay.
And it is a reminder how grateful the city is for the extra lengths that you go to, to help our community. So, thank you very, very much. Okay, so we got to scrunch together for our pictures. We might have to do two rows, right?
Yeah.
But we can also scrunch out a close to.
Do we fit?
Yes. Everybody ready? Here we go.
Do we all look, uh-oh.
Y'all all looked amazing.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
We understand. Not a problem.
Thank you all so much.
Of course. And it's still light outside. Wow. Okay, next we have items to be removed from the consent agenda. If council has nothing to remove, chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, we're going to consider a bid award for Regay Street headwall. Good afternoon, Case.
Mayor City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant City Engineer. Please forgive my lack of voice. I'm trying to get it back. On February 5th, we received bids for a replacement of the Regay Street headwall. This is between Brookshire Street and Miller Drive. You might have noticed it on the east side there. It's in a failing state. We're getting pretty concerned about how long it's going to hold up. And so, we, we've got it designed by 215 Engineering for a, for a replacement of that headwall. It's actually going to be a, a two-wall approach versus just the one headwall. It's going to have a lower wall and an upper wall with some sidewalls, as well as addressing any issues that they might find with the pipe underneath the roadway. They're going to then, you know, come back and put extra sidewalks along that, that eastern side and then repair the roadway. So, we received three bids, Dig Commercial being the lowest. They're an Austin-based firm. We have not worked with them before, but we, we checked on them, did some, some checking on their references and they appear qualified to do this kind of work. Excuse me. What staff would recommend is to go ahead and award the base bid and alternate four, which would allow the whole road to be closed for the duration of the project. The base bid originally was having the road open for phase one when they demolished the existing wall and other ancillary things, then closing it while they rebuild the wall and then opening it again. And we, while that might decrease some of the closures, we feel it's safer. It'll take a shorter duration to just go ahead and close that road down, allow it to, to be rebuilt and open back up, you know, all at once before, before we open the road back up. This will be contingent on Tech Dot opening Austin back up. So, we are not going to do anything before there is at least two-lane traffic or two-way traffic on Austin between North Street and Regay. And then, when we do, do the closure, Brookshire Street will have access to Austin, obviously. But Miller Drive, the northern residence on Regay, will be able to utilize Myrtle or Lakewood to get to North Baccon, back down to Austin to head east, or they can get to North Street from there. So, what we would recommend is to award this bid to Dig Commercial. We would recommend awarding the base bid and alternate four, which allows the roadway to be closed for the duration of the project. And this is about a 45-day closure. So, after public comment, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item? No? Okay. Counsel, questions or comments for Mr. Offerman?
You mentioned, you answered one of my questions about how long it would be closed.
Yes, sir.
That's if it's closed in one session.
Yes.
Alternate session would extend it.
Thirty days. So, 75 days total. Yes, sir.
And a lot of the, this amount of money was a lot of money when I first looked at it.
Yes, sir.
But after talking to Mr. Bartlett, there's a lot of other work being done besides the headwall.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
And that's part of redoing the street also?
Yes, sir.
Because there have been a lot of complaints about that section and that.
We've had issues with that street right there. We've got the infamous, you know, Regay hump there, right there over the top of that area. So, we will, you know, one of the ancillary benefits of doing this work is we're actually going to be able to repair the road in that section. And you can see it on your screen there, kind of the extent of the, the work there, just south of that driveway between Brookshire and that driveway. So, we will be able to take care of a portion of the street there. We're going to, like I said, bring the street in just a little narrower there to allow for that sidewalk section. And that's also to, to decrease that tendency that people have to swing out to the, to the east there. The, the road widens out, as you'll probably remember, as you go north. So, it kind of extends that narrower section of Regay Street through that headwall.
And any additional sidewalk?
Just on the east side there for this project. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I mean, when I first looked at the price for a headwall, but how did you explain it to me? I better understand the price.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and our, the way we thought about it and our, our engineering consultant as well, we all kind of thought a little lower than that. But when you have your two lower bidders being within about $30,000 of each other at $300,000, it kind of tells you, well, that might have been the real price after all. So. But there, there are several other aspects to the project than just the headwall. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Not, not that I'd question a Tech Dot timeline. God forbid they missed those. But are we in a spot where there's enough damage there that it's, if we waited 30 or 60 or 90 days for Tech Dot to finish their job? And they're doing a good job, but is, is there potential further erosion that could cause more damage between now and then that's, that's of concern?
Yes. Yes, sir. And that's, that's why we're, we would recommend go ahead and doing this as soon as possible. That's, that would be our recommendation as staff. We've, we've been keeping an eye on this for, for a while now and it, it seems to be getting worse. As, you know, we've had a lot of wet weather, you know, it's, it's destabilizing that wall. And it's, it's just a matter of time, is what we feel like. So, it, it might last until Tech Dot's done, but it might not. And if it, if it happens to fail between now and then, we'd be looking at most likely a much more expensive repair and a potential danger there.
Because you mentioned this project is contingent upon that, Tech Dot being done first, correct?
Only opening it to two-way traffic. And we've had conversations with Tech Dot within the past couple of weeks, basically about this project. And they are, the, the fuse is short for them getting at least two-lane, two-way traffic open, one east direction, one westward. It's not going to be four-way. They're not going to be completely done. But they've, they've agreed to look into opening it up to two-way traffic at least so that we can have that, that movement east and west so that we can look at closing this area down.
Do we need to explore, saying to heck with it, do we need to go ahead and pull the trigger and get this moving? That way, it doesn't deteriorate further and have a potential liability there, both financially but also?
Well, Tech Dot's timeline that, that we talked about and without nailing them to a specific date, they indicated it might be within the next couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. So, really, the, the idea is by the time we get this contract, if, if council was to approve this contract this evening, by the time I can get this contract signed off on and everything and executed, we'd probably be looking at a pretty short window to, to starting.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, yes, sir.
I have a question about the sidewalk.
Yes.
That's so scary, being so close to the street. So, it's just going to be raised up and right next to the street?
Well, and it will be, it'll, it'll be just like any other sidewalk that we have, you know, right off the back of curb. And it's, if, if you can see, it's a continuation of the southern sidewalk that we have on Regay existing. So, what, what we're really doing is just extending the, the alignment of the existing sidewalk a little further north.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
So, Chair would entertain a motion.
Does this need to include alternate four or?
Okay, yes.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to, of the Regay Street headwall to Dig Commercial along with alternate bid four.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number eight, receive an annual report from the Recreation Department. Toria Schmidt, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Vicki. Vicki Schmidt, I am your Recreation Superintendent. And I'm here to just tell you what we've been doing this past year. So, we're going to get started with our gymnastics program. Many of you know that we had partnered about a year ago with the Boys and Girls Club. And it was to let our older participants move over to the Boys and Girls Club where they have a bigger area, a pit, things like that. So, we were able to do that and create more classes for our younger kids. It has been extremely beneficial for us. That first session right after, we did lose about 15 kids. In the grand total, though, that's really not that bad and we have built that back up. Summers, no matter what, for us are always small. But I will say this, this spring that just finished, we had 90 participants within our actual gymnastics program for the one session. And that doesn't include our open gyms that we do every other Friday night, which are very popular, especially when there's hot weather and all that kind of stuff. So, it has been very beneficial for us to partner with the Boys and Girls Club on this one. So, our gymnastics program is growing and we're enjoying that. And so, there's that one. Next, we have our actual recreation center usage. So, our basketball gym, we saw a small decrease a couple of years ago. Part of that was NISD opening up their gyms during the summer to their basketball players and stuff like that and being able to do open gyms. We have seen a slight increase to the use of our weight rooms. And our most popular night is our 18 and overnight. So, if anybody ever wants to come out and watch on Wednesday nights, they have some great games that go on. They are basketball players and it's, it's, they have some intense games. So, it's great. And the gymnastics open gyms, like I talked about, when it's hot or too cold, whatnot, every other Friday night, that gym is full. We have anywhere from 10 to 15 participants each Friday night. So, it's kind of nice. Tumbletots is another program that we put on and it's every Monday during the day. So, we do it 10 to 11 a.m. and that's to hit those moms that are at home, moms or dads, that are at home with their little ones and it just gives them a place to go that's outs, that's not outside, but it's outside of their homes and they get to get, get together with the other little kids and it's a great time. We, we average on that one anywhere between 15 and 20 every Monday. When the weather gets a little bit nicer, they head to parks for a little bit, but then it gets hot again and they're back inside. So, it's fantastic. Uh, let's see, recreation classes. I just wanted to kind of update you on what we had. So, you can see we have adult classes, youth classes. Some of ours have started just over a year ago and they have expanded to having different, to have a youth class. So, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu is a fantastic example of that. And they started with everybody just being in the same classes. They've grown to the point that we took the kids and made a kids' class all of their own. Our country, country dancing and ballroom dancing have become very popular again. It seems every, every January that, that people start calling again and they want to come to that and that's every Saturday. So, anyhow, there's a whole list of them. If you ever have questions about those, please let me know and I would be happy to answer those for you. Next is our special events. And these are, these are events that usually only happen once a year. So, Kid Fish happened in January and this one is a lot of fun for me. It's one of the only free events that I put on, but it's out at Lakeside Park. This year, we had 210 registered participants, but that's not including the ones that just came out to fish. And that is not, also not including their parents. So, they registered to try and win things and we have had a great partnership with Academy, with Spirit Outfitters, people that were willing to donate things this year and it was, it made the event, the event even better. So, if you, Kid Fish is great. So, if you ever come out in January, it's usually, it's the Saturday after MLK every year out at Lakeside Park. So, it's a great one. Summer camps, we do every summer. Last summer, they were completely full all summer long, which was great. We hold 24 participants in our building and we do, we do arts and crafts. We go to the gymnastics room, we go to the gym, we bring in all sorts of special guests. It's great. We do winter camp and then this year, next week, we are doing spring break camp. We tried it a couple of years ago. It was not successful for us, so we decided to, you know, we're going to hold off for a year. We decided to do it again this year and right now, we're sitting at 12 participants. We can hold 24. And registration is still open for that if anybody needs a place for their kids to go for spring break. And again, it's just in our facility, we do different events, crafts, gymnastics room, dance room, dance-offs. It's great. My instructors are fantastic. And then, the last special event that I do is Corporate Challenge. And I'm going to give you guys a little bit more on Corporate Challenge this year than I normally do because we have sign-ups going on right now, as well as registration. Corporate Challenge happens every April. It started in 2006, so we're going on 14, 15 years here of doing Corporate Challenge. And we change out events every couple of years and I'll, I'll get into those a little bit. But Corporate Challenge is a lot of fun. Councilmember Bolden participates every year. Jeff Davis here, he participates every year. I asked Jen every year and her answer is, I will come and I will be your support system and I will gladly take that. But we have a lot of fun and it's great to get out and it's to be with other people. Um, in 2019, we had the, the events that we took out from that one were footsall, which is indoor soccer. The mud run, mostly because that got moved to May. And since Corporate Challenge happens in April, it's kind of hard to do that one. And then, we also took out tug-of-war. Mostly, that one was, as a child, you remember doing tug-of-war and you're like, this is so much fun. As an adult, it is so much harder. It, I came out of that so sore. It was incre, I had not felt like that in a long time. So, this year, we added back in bass fishing, axe throwing and trivia night over at Fredoni Brewery. So, if any of you would like to have your companies participate or if you would like to participate, you can participate as, with the city and we would love to have you. If nothing else, just coming out and talking with people. Part of what we hope Corporate Challenge does is getting those people who wouldn't normally work together on a daily basis together to participate in different events. Clearly, there's a competitive side to it and people want to win trophies and whatnot. But I myself have gotten to meet so many of the participants from other businesses. And one of them, some of my favorites, one of them is a lady named Yolanda from Nibco. I did ask her before I did my presentation, but she's a fantastic woman. And every time I see her outside now, I get to run up and I give her a hug and it's so good to see her. So, those are the, the relationships that have been formed because of Corporate Challenge. Some of the corporations that did it last year were like your Eaton's, E-Tex, obviously City of Nacogdoches, CBTX, Pilgrim. Some of these are longstanding and some of them are brand new. And that's what we hope to foster is, is a way for them to get outside of their business and hang out with each other. So, like I said, we added in trivia, bass fishing and axe throwing. And then, some of our normal ones are your kickball, table tennis, women's mini golf, golf, bowling, volleyball and washers. So, those are, some of those are pretty standing because they, we have a lot of participation in some of those. So, anyways, Corporate Challenge, we'd love to see you come out. I'd love to have you guys as part of, if you want to do it with the city, we would love to have you. Just let Steven over here know and he'll get you signed up. So, that's Corporate Challenge and then we'll do the last couple of things here. I wanted to let you know about our sports. Participation for youth volleyball this year is way up, which is awesome. And at the same time, I'm struggling with gym space because I only have one gym. So, we have been partnering with NISD, not only on volleyball, but with basketball. We have to find more space for, for our participants, which is a great problem to have. Youth basketball, we had another great season. Adult softball, our participation is a little bit down on that one. Part of it is people are going to Lufkin because they have more teams to compete against. And some of it is people are aging out of the programs. Unfortunately, it's people around my age who have been doing it for 20 and 30 years and they're like, all right, I'm, I'm kind of done now. And that's okay. That's where, so we're trying to focus on the SFA students and try to get them to participate a little bit more. And then, you can see we do adult footsall, which is indoor soccer, and then adult soccer. And that participation has been going up each year we do it. So, you can see our total participants for adults have been 1,391-ish. Some of those are returning each season, so. And then, youth participation was at 506 this year, which is great. And then, a real quick thing on trends in activities and things that we have been watching and how to incorporate them in the Recreation Center. These were put out in December of 2019 of what they find the Recreation Management. They do an article every year on what they think will be the new trends in recreation. And one of them is wearable technology. For those of you who have on your Fitbits and Apple Watches and all of those, that's what they, they mean by wearable technology. Your HIIT classes are your high-intensity interval training, group training, so Zumba, which we have at the Rec Center, anything like that. Personal training, the one-on-one, and then body weight training where they can do it at home. So, there's no weights that have to be involved. So, those are some of the trends that I found interesting. And then, lastly, I wanted to show you our annual revenue for fiscal year 1819 was at 234, 321. And then, you can look back for the last few years and see we've been increasing slowly each year. And hopefully, this year, we will continue on that. We're on track to hit the same thing, if not a little bit more. So, that is everything recreation.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment that they would like to make? Okay, counsel, any questions?
No questions. My 15-month-old loves the tumbletots.
Isn't that great?
He was, he has a, he's a hen, so we have big heads. It's hard to learn how to walk. But ever since, ever since he's been going to that and just seeing other kids and it can fall and it's not so painful.
Yeah.
He's, he's taken off, so thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have something they'd like to share?
No. I think you do a really great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is, it is great. Thank you so much. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item, receive annual report from the Library Department. We have Mercedes Franks. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, counsel, mayor. My name is Mercedes Franks and I am your library director, giving you the annual report for fiscal year 1819. First, we're going to just start out with some traditional library services that we offer, our collection. We have 105,597 items in our collections. This is pretty, pretty stable from year to year. And then, we have some comparisons from the previous year. The circulation of physical items, you'll see that includes books, e-book, books, videos, audiobooks. Went down slightly, however, that, that shortage was made up a little bit in the circulation of our digital collection, our ebooks and our e-audiobooks. And you can see that that is growing. I believe that was close to a 40% increase. And so, we're really proud of that. We started that service in 2013. To do all the things that we do at the library, we have a wonderful staff. We have Crystal Hicks, our Assistant Director, who does great work in seeking out collaborations, as well as our Program Coordinator, Emily Childress, plus all of our staff. They, you can count on them to do one-on-one assistance, to help people troubleshoot computer issues, reference, all sorts of important duties that they provide. And we are open 57 hours a week. Our library usage, we continue to be a very busy building. Sharing the facility with the Recreation Center has helped because we see a lot of crossover between the two departments. You can see that our visits to the library increased. That does not count people that maybe went to a program in the meeting room and didn't actually go through the gate counter. So, we are very pleased to see that, that increase. The computer sessions, it went down a little bit and I looked back to see why that might have been the case. And we were actually down for close to two weeks our public computers, which is unfortunate because our computers are the only place in town that people can use to apply for jobs, do homework, apply for benefits, without expectation of, of having to purchase anything. So, you can see that even with being down those two weeks, they were still heavily used. We are very active in looking for grants. This year, we were awarded the Texas Book Festival. That was a That was the third year in a row that we were awarded that. That was for collection development. We purchased graphic novels and juvenile graphic novels. And then the big grant that we were very pleased with, the second year that we received the National Endowment for the Arts grant, $14,000 to purchase books. We put on several programs throughout the month of October and in various areas here in town. The impact of that grant, this was one month's worth of work. The staff worked very hard. You can see that we had great attendance at the programs and almost something going on almost every day. This is one great benefit of this program, is that we've been able to make contact with a lot of the local performance groups that have, that are now doing other activities for us. As you can see, we had great program attendance throughout the year. A total of 16,654 people came. The majority of those people are coming to the family programs and the juvenile programs. People like to do things together as a family, and we're glad that we're another place that people can have a chance to do that, offer something affordable and fun. The other significant program, figure there is the one-on-one assistance that people can utilize at the library. We have book a library, where people can call us and book a session, whether it's computer help, using their smartphones, some other assistance. And that's a free service that we provide that is very popular. For the sixth year in a row, our community held the Dia de los Muertos program. This is a very important outreach program. This year, we actually increased the size of it. We went all the way down to close Main Street, and we saw people, vendors from all over the region, as well as participants. And this is just one of our local groups that's been coming for several years now. The programs that we do, we have programs for adults and children and teens, things to learn how to do something, as well as just plain have a good time at the library. And we do try to expand our programs outside of our facility. As you can see, this was a partnership that we did with Boys and Girls Club, where we had a youth business academy. And then the picture on the left is an art program. We have many things planned for this upcoming year. We've just submitted our application to the National Endowment for the Arts Big Read. We're always pursuing grants, and right now, our focus is on getting ready for the summer, as well as our efforts in promoting participation in the census. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any comments on the presentation about the library services? Bring them. Counsel, any questions?
No question. I just.
No, go ahead.
No.
I was just have a comment. The library is such a public good for our community. I think that you and your staff do such an awesome job. I mean, there's not a place that I can turn where I hear, where I don't hear how great it is in the programs. And also, you've been doing a ton of work behind the scenes on the census, which is major for our community. So, thank you.
And also for us senior citizen and my mission team. I mean, they love going to the library with the type of programs. Bad or, well, I just want to, is that tax assistance still going on at the library?
Yes, sir. We have every Monday, AARP volunteers come from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30, and they do taxes free of charge and file electronically free of charge, except for this Monday due to spring break.
Is that popular with the community?
Yes, sir. The building opens at 9:00, and people start lining up about 8:15. So, every Monday, they do about 20, 20 to 25 tax returns, which is, doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is a lot when you're looking at individual returns.
Okay. Thank you.
That variety is just very impressive. So, thank you. And please thank your staff on our behalf also.
I should go. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we do not have an executive session this evening, so that will conclude our meeting for March 3rd, 2020.